Presented live on local access, so know that as you prepare your statements. And I just wanna say real quick, we're gonna do open session in a minute, but then we're just gonna do a quick little flip of a couple of the agenda items to get Travis up here to do a quick sort of status presentation. Apparently he was doing something the other day, I was stalling out for twenty-six hours or whatever. So, anyway, so, open session, do we have anyone here for open session? Deb, hi.
Hi.
Come on up.
So I'm just here to give you guys a little bit of an update, so you don't think any of us, you know, we're sleeping at the job or anything like that. This is a survey that we had done up by this is not being presented to you tonight because we have just a couple of little notes, notations that still need to be put on. The survey, and of course because I'm not on your agenda, so I tried to look ahead to see when the next agenda is, February fourth maybe?
Fourth is the next meeting.
Is the next meeting, okay, so we'll have, you know, our petition done up for you and have, how many copies of this would you guys need? Not everybody doesn't need one, right?
I, I, zero, I mean, meaning electronic would be, would be fine.
Electronic.
Can't be put up there, huh?
Yeah.
Electronic, like a drop there, yeah, okay, so I'll, I'll get it sent to you electronically.
If you get electronic, again.
Yeah.
It's probably a good idea to bring one, so that we can flip it around as we're all sort of sitting around here, but we'll be able to look at this too, but it might be easier for you to have something in front of you.
Yeah, okay. Okay, alright. Alright, so really the purpose here is just so that you guys know we're still committed and we're still moving ahead and we've invested, you know, time and money into the project. You, I'm guessing all of you have, this is kinda like a little primer, it's like a little check sheet, this is something that KP Law has put out.
Okay.
I know, this is sometime from last year, I'm positive you have it in your emails, but I can send it again if you would like me to do that. It's sort of like a little check sheet as to how a road takeover happens and what their recommendations are. One of the recommendations that they have on here, which is not a requirement, is for any title work that might need to be done. Something we would really like to avoid having to do if we can.
For expense reasons?
For expense reasons, yeah, 'cause we're already putting a lot into this. We have hired a lawyer, so she will be drawing up all the necessary paperwork for not only getting an article on the warrant, but also for the paperwork that's needed for us to gift you the road. So.
Okay, great, I'm glad everything's still progressing with you.
Yep.
I think what we've learned, right, we might as well go over some things we've learned, which is terminology is really important.
Right.
Right, so that warrant article, probably not a bad idea to bounce it around between the lawyers when the time comes to make sure that it's exactly right.
Yep. Who, who would be the name of the, the contact person at KP Law that our lawyer should?
Ryan McClain.
I'll funnel it for you.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll go through him.
Okay, sure.
And then we'll get it to the right, you know, specialist that would handle that.
So I could just give her your email address, would that be okay, our lawyer?
Yeah, she emails me, I'll make sure she's.
Okay, alright, great.
Are you still, still dealing with the opposition that you, that you've been having?
Um, well, I'm, I'm, we're, we're working hard to have that not be an issue.
Is there any residents on the road that aren't on board with this, or?
That's why I asked the opposition.
Yeah, well, I know about that one.
Well, there's no, there's no residents that aren't on board.
Okay.
There is one section of road that is an access point, more towards the north end, I don't really sure which page it's gonna be on. This is the, the piece of property that I had emailed about a while ago that was in tax title for a while with the town. It used to belong to a company called West Hub Realty, and they now pay their taxes for ten, twelve, thirteen, or something like that. But it went to auction and it was recently sold to another company, so I do have a phone call out and emails out to that company to see, they have a little fifty-foot access piece, it's right here, that I need to get them to see what they're gonna do.
So how well do you know your road now, you know your road pretty well?
And all my neighbors.
Okay, well, it sounds like, it sounds like it's going as you planned?
Yeah, I, I think for the most part, so I just, I just wanted you guys to know that we were, we're working on it and we have the dates for making sure we have the article ready. So one of the things that, not only that I, I mentioned about, I'd, we'd like for there not to have to be title work done if we can. And if it's, if, you know, KP Law says they absolutely are gonna require that you guys make us do that, then, then our second request would be that we would not have to have that done until after the town vote. Because there is no sense to having, we have a hundred and twenty days to get all the paperwork after the town vote, you guys probably all know that. But there's no sense to having to pay for work that is no reason to pay for. Yeah, exactly, so.
It sounds logical, but.
Well, I think you guys have the power to just say, that's how, that you're gonna, you know, that really has nothing to do with KP Law, because like I said, it is not, it is not required. There's no state law that requires that work to be done, and certainly you guys can say you're not gonna require us to pay for it ahead of time.
Agreed, but do you know, do you know what, what the town's risk would be to not have it done? And again, I'm not, I'm not angling, I mean, just wondering.
Yeah, I, yeah, I probably don't know a hundred percent, I mean, we, we have, you know, provided, certainly the surveyor with all of our deeds and all of our titles. And the lawyer that we've hired also has all of that, so I just, I can't even see that it's an issue in part because, you know, the, the north end of the road, it's not even part of people's deeds because it just wasn't laid out that way. They own up to the edge of the, the road.
Yep.
And so therefore there is, you probably know there is a state law that, that reverts, everybody reverts to the middle of the road when they don't have it in their deeds, but, so what would the title search? It would come up with nothing on that end, because they're, because it's not part of their deeds, so it's kinda silly to have it required, so.
What I can do is compare this to KP Law, when we went through this for the last town meeting, gave us, this is what you need to do to make this a road, so I can compare it to that.
Mm-hmm.
If I get the electronic plans and say a letter from the residents saying that they all intend to file this.
Mm-hmm.
So we have some justification for spending the money, then I can get options to the board for the next meeting.
Okay.
On how it should be written up or what should be done, or can we put off something like a title search, et cetera.
Yeah. Yep, so next meeting if, you know, that, that's when I'm gonna be asking for some, some voting on.
I'll do a little research.
Okay, great, thank you, any, any questions or anything like, okay, great, thanks for your time, I appreciate it.
Okay, thanks Deb. Nothing further to move on? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, you wanna do one quick announcement before we have Travis come up?
Yeah, it's just the announcements, so it's still the frozen assets is coming up, the, the structure is not on the pond yet, it won't be placed on there until February, like mid-February, it's actually still being worked on, so people can put in guesses, I don't know how many Katie has received to date, but you have until the first to submit them and then the prizes obviously go, there's, there's four prizes. It's a twenty-dollar donation, she just wants to stress that, if you don't have the twenty dollars, you can still put in a guess and you're still eligible for prizes. The donation, all that goes towards is just future events for the special events fund. I mean, if you have five dollars that you wanna give, if you wanna donate something, you can, if you have nothing, if you have a hundred dollars you wanna donate, it doesn't matter, it's just, it's a justed donation. But again, if you have nothing, you know, we'd rather have the guesses in, let's get it moving and going forward than, you know, nothing at all.
And where, and where can we find this?
Uh, so it can be found here, it can be found at Yakimos Pizza Palace, I think the hub of the hub. I did send her an email blast today telling people where they can get it, so there were quite a few, there was like five different locations and you can just go in, fill out the form, and then, you know, she'll, she'll be going around picking them up, or here, you know, if you wanna come in here.
Okay, thanks, yeah, welcome up.
The country trail.
Country, and I had them almost.
Challenging, challenging first one there, huh, I know it's not the first one, but challenging one in a while.
Yeah, cool, it seemed like it was never gonna end.
Okay. So hey, so we, we asked you to come in here, talking at our last meeting, actually had zero to do with us thinking a storm was actually, oh, go ahead.
He prepared a handout too, that we gave him in the paper.
You have it in front of us?
Yes.
And so, okay, we've already sort of, as I take a quick perusal through this, as I bring it over here, I can already tell what you've done, but anyway, for everybody else, I guess, we've asked you to come, just to get a snapshot of where we're at. You know, we, we drive around town, right, we live in town, we, we can have a feel for how the winter's been, but we don't really know, 'cause we know that, we've heard from so many years that, you know, a little event can still take a lot of time, take a lot of money, because it's cold enough and it's slippery and all that sort of stuff. So I guess we just wanted to get a, a, an update of where you think you're at, as of now.
I kinda gave you this, this write-out that I did.
Yep.
I do it for every storm we have, so there's more or less an explanation of where the salt goes and how much and how come. So I started towards the, and I started putting road temps in because that way you kinda understand, because a lot of these storms in the beginning are thirties, forties, it was raining, but we're treating because the ground temperature was less than freezing, so what happened was is, that's unfortunate, what we had, we had the big storm there, it's a heavy wet snow, depending on the type of snow that comes down, depends on how we treat, you know, it's, if we get the wet, heavy snow, it packs really easy. If you don't have a treatment down, you get the hard pack, and then it takes twice as much to get it up, so we, we do a half treats and depending on what it is, I mean, I think we've done pretty good. Trying to figure out what nature has thrown at us so far, I mean, this one at the, between being warm and then going to negative numbers after that, I mean, every town around us, I think we came out pretty good on it, but you could see in other towns using just a mix of sand and salt, their roads are covered still, you know, back to what ours used to be, and depending on what you're using for chemical, the temperature has a, you could see as it was getting colder, the less the salt wanted, I, the salt we're using goes to negative six, so I mean, it was going for a while there until it kept spitting.
So we've got, we've got, this is, you know, sort of what I wanted to see, there are thirty events on here, in my quick count, which is more than I would've thought.
Yep.
You know, I know some of them are spot sanding, a couple of those, but overall, I mean, there's, there's still a, a fair amount of utilization to date.
You actually have a couple that are two days in a row, so if you really did, it's really thirty-two.
No, I counted both those, I guess the third.
'Cause I got, through here, as like mid, mid, midstream, I had shown what we were, and then I had gone to, obviously, today. So that way you show what we are up to date, you know, where we stand with the salt. So right now, I always had a quart of shed of salt, and right now I got just over half of the four loads that we have, so I always keep that reserve in case.
So it looks like one, one treatment of the town is about twenty tons.
So what, what, how, how, how we stand, without, without nailing you down on exact dollars, yeah, how do you, how do we stand?
I'm looking, what I had done, I spent some time as I stayed after the, for the meeting here, and I kinda looked to see where we were this time last year and where we are this year. So, right now, the budget for the winter, we're at, with the salt that we have in the shed right now, we stand at seventy-nine thousand four hundred and thirty-nine dollars. That's what we have left in the kitty, out of that kitty comes out of winter diesel and any winter repairs that go with the trucks along with the salt. So if that money right there was just salt, I feel that we could possibly make the year just right there. But looking towards what we had in diesel, diesel and repairs of last year, which was right around thirty-six thousand, you know, just about thirty-seven, I'm probably looking that we'll have that overage, 'cause we're, right now we stand about twenty thousand with the diesel and repairs that we have, we just have a broken spring, we have a couple of things on the sidewalk.
Twenty thousand expended?
Yeah.
Okay.
Expended so far, so I mean, right now, actually, we have fifteen, fifteen and a half expended in the diesel and the repair. We, I ordered two thousand diesel, so that's forty-six hundred dollars, so as of tomorrow, the bill will be twenty thousand we have expended in diesel and repair.
And how does manpower factor into all this?
That has its own separate line item for the overtime.
Yeah, I, I guess I meant where do we stand, same relative question, in the manpower piece of what we budgeted versus where we think we're at right now.
So far so good, looks good for the overtime, I mean, trying to keep it as tight as we can, but the storms, I mean, the weatherman can't even predict it, so I'm trying to.
I mean, and we got ham at the end of last year, right, was, was it February where we got all the storms, we got three in a row, or March, or whatever that was?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's been, I guess, a quiet winter for snow, but it's been a mess, I mean, it's gonna be a mess, we're gonna get rain tomorrow.
Yep.
I got ground temps of eighteen, we're gonna be treating, you know, and if it stays a heavy wet rain all through the whole deal, which is Thursday also, it's coming in cold at the end of it, so you're gonna be treating again, all the dirt roads.
Supposed to be fifty, fifty some Thursday.
Yeah, and all the dirt roads are gonna ice over.
Yeah.
You know, so it's, it's a mess.
So hey, I got a question, so on Friday night, evening, I guess, I, I was picking up my daughter, and I went in, I actually pulled into the driveway and then the, the, the salt truck came by spreading salt, I went inside, and then ten minutes later, another parent came to pick up their kid and said, "I think you guys are already getting ice and snow and stuff," and I said, "No, no, that was the, the, the salt that just went by." Did you increase application for the storm because of what was coming, or is that just the normal amount?
No, the one that goes by yours actually was the.
It wasn't my house, it was, it was Natty.
Natty Pond, no.
No.
No, they're all calibrated, but two of our newer trucks, the eighteen and the fifteen freightliner, have electronic spinners in them. So it really takes the guesswork out of everything, they just pretty much turn the button on. As they move, it goes on, puts out the correct amount that we want per lay mile, which is two fifty, and they have another button that they can click it to, to cut it for a half treatment, so during the storm where you don't need a full treatment, you can just do half just to keep it loose.
I guess that's what I meant though, too, is this, was this due to what was coming, was this?
Yeah, pre-treat, so if you saw them before anything was happening, it was a pre-treat before they were, and what they were doing is, 'cause it was Natty Pond, they were doing the side roads first, less traffic, so they don't blow it off the road.
Okay.
And then, then they do their mains last, so, and that, I tell them, when they're doing their side roads, if you see it start coming down, to go right to your mains and start hitting them, and then go back and finish your, your sides after, but usually that's why you see us out before. They're, they're on their side streets doing them first, 'cause they usually, before I had gotten neglected and not gotten to, because we waited close to when it was coming down, hitting the mains and never getting to them, so.
How's morale down there, everybody seems to be getting along?
Yeah, yeah, it's ups and downs, but it's the winter, you know, everybody, you don't see enough sun, you go to work in the dark, you go home in the dark, and then you have twenty-six hours of continuous plowing of weather, I mean, it gets on anybody's nerves, you know what I mean, so.
It does, but it's, you know, in your leadership and management position, part of that is in your job description, right, to sort of be able to try to manage that best you can and.
Yep, five different personalities.
Right, yeah, no, I know, I'm just, I mean, that's part of the job.
Five, there are five different personalities and everyone has a bad day sooner or later, so I'm just the one person that reflects on them, I guess. But do my best to keep everybody happy down there as best as I can with what I got, so.
Okay. Uh, how about the equipment, where, where are we at with the, I know you just touched on it a little bit, but overall, any sort of significant things you see on the cusp of happening?
Well, Neil, our new mechanic's been great, he's done, kept up on everything, we've had two trucks, he found a wire break on one, so he's gonna be fixing that tomorrow. And then we have the Mack that's got some spring issues, so that's gonna be replaced tomorrow and hopefully be done tomorrow. In time for the storm, so in midst of that, I mean, everything's been up and running. He's got the Huff Loader up and running, which was, prior to him was on its deathbed and needed a new piece of equipment, so he's actually fixed the motor in it and we've used that, and we've used the brush mower, now we've used that all summer, plus, that's what we're doing now while the, the snow's not on the ground, between ground cutting and brush mowing, so.
I see they did underwood road, they did a good job.
Yeah, we're trying to get everywhere in town, 'cause more we can open up, we can cut the shoulders and get it back to where it is, and then brush mowing won't take as long to do, we can probably pretty much hit everything every year and keep it for the wintertime, you know, so.
Travis, I see the guys went out on Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve, tell them we appreciate that, you know, being away from the families and everything. Going out was on holiday.
And Martin was the King Day.
Hope, yeah.
Alright, well, I guess I'd, I'd just, unless, unless he's got, I was gonna say.
I do, just have a couple things to add, so the innovations that Travis is, is adding to our town, especially calibrating the salt, is really allowing us to hone in on costs. And just for the public to understand, we budget a hundred and sixty thousand for winter supplies, which is the diesel, the repairs and the salt we're talking about. Hundred and sixty's about the cost of the salt, so in a, in an average year, so the DPW starts behind the eight ball, it's underfunded because of the way that that account can be spent in deficit, so I put a tremendous amount of pressure on Travis to control costs as I am across, across the town, and to enforce some policies, which can also, you know, cause some, uh, morale issues or other things, as I'm, I'm trying to control costs while still telling our guys, thank you for your service and all those other things. So as we implement these policies and try and create some sustainability, there, there is some pressures there on, on the department, and I appreciate the way they're responding. Because we overspent that account by ninety thousand last year, which is not.
What type of policies are you talking about? You said implementing policies, new policies?
Just trying to control costs, so policies in terms of how we, how we spend money in the DPW, what type of reserves we have, just analyzing how much salt goes down the road, right, so that causes, you know, Travis to might, to maybe say, hey, you need to make sure you're not putting too much salt on the road, right, which it, it can be a change when sometimes people expect to say, just know that. For example, is one of the policies. But that's because for every dollar that we overspend the account by, that's a dollar we don't have in free cash to purchase equipment and other things in our capital plan, so. I just wanna get a true assessment of costs in all the departments, and that can cause some, some pressure of course, 'cause budget, budgets are difficult.
Okay, I mean, you know, I think we've had a good start to the season as far as I'm concerned, I think as we all know, last year was, was like a watershed year for all the accolades that were, you know, bestowed upon you guys as a team to execute things so well, so I guess we just look forward to seeing more of that the rest of the year here, and we let us know what you need from us.
Appreciate it.
Hello? Just wrapping up here, you got anything?
Good job on the roads.
Yours.
Gotcha.
Yours might be dead, he has your charger, so we can transfer it over.
Say, say that again?
That might be dead.
Oh, might be dead.
But we have a charger, he's got it right now.
Uh, so our next item of business is the presentation of the fiscal year twenty to twenty-four capital plan presentation. See you guys again.
Thanks for having us.
Um, and this is gonna be the floor of yours, unless you don't want it to be at any point during you having the floor, and if you wouldn't mind just introducing yourselves as you start off and we can sort of go from there.
Yep, absolutely. If you have any questions or anything, comments, you know, feel free to interrupt us, but we'll run through our presentation, and again, we do have time for questions or comments or to explain things in further depth.
Okay.
Alright, so.
Sorry, just to orient the capital plan, the actual written and the narrative went out to earlier this week, and we reviewed it in your folders, the presentation we have today, so that's what's up here and what they're discussing from, but everything comes from the plan.
Yeah, there are other documents, not only the formal plan that Ryan's talking about, but all the working documents, those are like the spreadsheets and all of the different things that we use to actually create the plan, which we turn over to Ryan, and he's gonna share with the capital planning committee and anybody else in town who's gonna be a part of that process going forward, so just so you know, there's other stuff that, that we'll be handing off too, so.
We share with everyone, everyone gets it.
Everyone can have it, everyone can be involved, it's more fun that way, so. My name is Sarah Concanon, I am from the Collin Center for Public Management at UMass Boston, and this is my colleague Rick Kingsley, and I'll have him introduce himself in a minute, but the Collin Center, for those of you who don't know, is set up like a consulting firm. It was set up by the state legislature a decade ago to provide technical assistance to municipalities, state agencies, other public districts in the Commonwealth and also a little bit outside of the Commonwealth, other states we've done some work in. And we do a wide range of services to municipalities, from finance work, like capital planning and budgeting work, policy writing, to executive recruitment for town administrator or superintendent perhaps. We do stuff in the HR world, like paying class studies, job descriptions, and a lot of other things too. So we've worked in many municipalities all around the state, nearly all of the counties in the state, except for Dukes County, I think. So we have a lot of experience, and I've been at the Collin Center for almost seven years. I do, started doing data analytics, but now I mainly do finance work located in Central Mass, so I get to come out and work with everybody in Central Mass, and also I handle Western Mass a lot. Want to introduce yourself?
Sure, I'm Rick Kingsley, I worked at the Division of Local Services for thirty years, where I headed up their municipal consulting operation, their municipal databank and the distribution of local aid and the issuance of cherry sheets. I've been at the Collin Center for the last three and a half years, I work on all matters of finance projects, capital plans, financial forecasts, financial management reviews. I remember being here about ten years ago doing a management review for Hubbardston for the Division of Local Services, so.
Okay, so just a sort of a, a, an initial quick question.
Mm-hmm.
This exact sort of five-year capital improvement plan is, is a quite common thing for you guys to participate in?
Yes, so we've done, I'm not sure exactly what number you are, but well over two dozen in the last, I think it's three, three and a half years. It's obviously something that we recommend that all municipalities have, and a lot of the ones that we're doing now are through, funded through the Community Compact Grant Program, which is how yours was funded, so we, we are finding that a lot of municipalities are saying, "Oh, now that there's money to do it, let's do it."
Guilty.
Yeah, which is great, why not, so, so yeah, we do have a lot of experience doing capital planning in cities, you know, as big as, greater than fifty thousand, and small towns as well, all over the state. Okay, so to kick us off, I just wanna sort of set the stage and provide you our definitions of what is a capital project, and this was communicated to the department heads, and also what is a capital improvement plan versus a capital budget. So for Hubbardston, the definition that we used was a major non-recurring expense that has a useful life of at least three years and a cost typically greater than ten thousand. Now that, as you saw in the plan, there were a few projects that fell under ten thousand, and that's okay, because they were too expensive to be absorbed in the operating budget, so we put them in the capital. In terms of a capital improvement plan, what makes it different than just a capital budget? Number one, it's multi-year, so in this case we did a five-year plan. Number two, it's comprehensive, which means it's covering all the departments, all the funding sources, not only money that's your general fund money, but grants, other special loan programs, and other types of local money, like CPA funds, things like that. And also, the plan is financially viable, so not only do we look at the project side of the equation, but it's Rick's job to look at the financial side of the equation and say, here's what you can spend, not only next year, but here's what I project would be available for the four out years, so years two through five of the plan. Okay, so this will just be mostly for the many people watching on TV, but
Got that right.
I'm a YouTube celebrity, 'cause I go to so many of these board meetings, so it's, it's pretty great. I've never had an autograph requested of me, but, you know, one day. So y, y, you here know this, but just what happens if you don't have a CIP? Well, you can sort of get along, it's, it, it's not catastrophic, but it, but it could be a hindrance to the municipality, so some of the things that might happen, there could be a negative impact to some public health or public safety, potentially even a legal liability exposure for the municipality. You might have staff that are operating in an inefficient way or an ineffective way. You might be faced with costly emergency repairs, so rather than replacing a truck that you know is imminently going to fail, you know, and preparing for it, you have Travis come and say, "The truck failed and it's in the middle of winter, so we have to replace it." And guess what, we don't have the luxury of trying to find a used vehicle, we don't have the luxury of shopping around, we have to get whatever we can get because we have a storm, things like that. Poorly managed or poorly timed projects, and the classic example is really related to pavement and utilities, like we pave a road and then two years later, we have to do the water infrastructure underneath it, or something with that similar type of timing issue. With a comprehensive multi-year plan, you can avoid that because it goes out publicly, the DPW can talk to the, the water superintendent and say, "I'm gonna do this road," and then, you know, they'll say, "Well, let's do the water infrastructure at the same time." Inconsistent debt service, so one of the things, one of the basic principles of establishing a capital plan, which Rick, I'm sure we'll talk about, is trying to keep debt service smooth so that it doesn't have negative impacts on your operating budget. And then just generally financial disorder and potentially negative impacts on bond rating. Um in the final report, we have a introductory chapter that kind of lays out what the town's capital assets are so that folks can really understand um. What the town is responsible for maintaining because it's not just the trucks that you see or the cruisers that you see. You know, it's it's all of the buildings and all of the small outbuildings like gazebo's and things like that, it's your IT assets. Um it's all the recreational fields, the conservation areas, the playground, um eighty-two and a half miles of road. Um twenty-two bridges and large culverts and um many other smaller culverts, um which is a lot of bridges and and major culverts, that's a lot for a town. And about forty-two pieces of major equipment or vehicles and there's more detail in the report if folks are interested in that. So now I'm just gonna walk through our sort of general process uh at a high level so you can understand what it is that we did. I think we started around the beginning of the fiscal year, right? I think it was July. So what we do first is talk to all the department heads, including any board or committee that might have oversight of a capital asset or wanna participate, so. We come for the whole day and sit with folks and um they're they're welcome to come and meet with us and we ask them what capital needs might you have. Um we collect a certain amount of data um on each capital project, we actually use an online form through Survey Monkey. And then we take all of that information, download it into a big spreadsheet, go back and forth with department heads to get clarifying information. Um using the information that we were given, we score every project and then we turn it over to the town administrator and work, Ryan and I worked closely together to prioritize projects.
Let me just add real quick if you wouldn't mind, I'm on the Town Center Committee with Alicia, I don't know if you guys met with Alicia, but she was one of the representatives in there, it's really easy to do all that as far as um user friendly. So I'm just, that's all I'm saying, is that it's not like it's a burden on, you know, the departments and going about doing it, it's pretty straightforward.
It's pretty straightforward and for the major departments, typically a DPW, I will sit one-on-one with them so that they don't have to sit there and submit forty-five different forms online.
Sure.
So we do, we do provide that because it can be, it can be a lot uh for the major departments. Um while Ryan and I are working on the project side of things, uh Rick is working with the financial staff and um oftentimes financial advisor. To develop the capital investment strategy, which he'll talk more in depth about. Um after we know the finance side of things, after that is clear, then Ryan can finalize the plan and decide, okay, these are the projects that we want in our final cut. Um looking into the future, once the plan has been passed, adopted, um the job of the town administrator and anybody else involved is to manage the plan, you know, make sure the projects get done, make sure that changes get absorbed into the plan and. Any um impacts that are triggered by changes get um figured out and then you repeat the process annually. Um any questions?
Sarah, I can just jump in for one second, so um on this slide here, talking about these large projects, you see some sticker shock there, a fifteen million dollar uh project to build a new building. So what I asked the architects to do was to give us the highest possible number there. The reason why, we went back and forth, Sarah and I, on this a lot. Um whether or not we should include building and infrastructure in the capital plan because it's clearly identified as a need, we've talked about it as a board, including it in the plan. But we wanted to create a sustainable plan that um either addressed the buildings or didn't, so it's kind of just plugged in here as a placeholder as we need to do these buildings. So I just didn't wanna gloss over that because it's obviously the biggest number in this and it it is representing the overall need of building and infrastructure.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry, I just wanted to make sure.
No, no, that's fine.
No one passed out.
So in terms of the capital needs, which are all of the projects that we received from every department or board, we got sixty-eight project requests, a little bit over um thirty-four point seven million dollars in total. And just to um sort of show you how much of that is taken up by just a few projects, I've listed out the 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 top three largest projects and you have uh I I kinda cheated a little bit and combined, the second bullet is a few projects combined, but. As Ryan said, there was the major building project at fifteen million, thirteen point two five million for significant road and bridge projects and that's all state and federal funding. So no local dollars and then uh one point five million to potentially replace the roof at the center school and slightly more of ha- more than half would be anticipated to be reimbursed through MSBA.
So including that three point two five would be the northern section of sixty-eight, would be the town center itself, similar to what we just did on the southern section of sixty-eight?
The bridge projects like Evergreen Bridge, which is two point two million alone.
Yep, all the projects on the tip and I can, I think in the plan, I actually pulled them out into a separate table so that everyone can see. Uh because getting projects on the tip is a really great way for towns to accomplish very expensive but very important projects. So um you know, it's not like the state's coming around and saying, here's some money, what do you wanna do with it? You have to be proactive about getting it and so, you know, for folks. The public who don't know, it's it's not just every town that can get, you know, thirteen million dollars in in state and federal money, so that's uh something to be um commended, I think, for for Hubbardston.
This is important though too, right? We're in the midst of this, you know, we have to spend three or four hundred thousand to design.
Exactly.
To get to the point where they know you're serious and you can get far enough along onto that tip, you know.
That's absolutely true, so part of being proactive is putting the money into design work to show, we have this shovel ready project, we've put skin in the game. And then, you know, you take that three hundred thousand or whatever you put into, you know, for design and it turns into four million dollars in seven years or ten years and so it is a long process, but it's it's definitely well worth it. Um, okay. So in terms of scoring projects, we have a scoring methodology that we use um and different criteria are weighted in different ways. Um it's it's not, it's more complex than um than.
You think we can handle?
I think you, no. What I was gonna say is it's not a simple method, but it's not very difficult to do, I mean, it it looks more complex on the outside, but we have a sheet that explains how to do it. These are the criteria that we use, so I'll just run through them quickly. Um is the project a state or federal mandate or is there some legal legal obligation or liability exposure? Is there a threat to health and safety? Does the project conform to other adopted plans or goals that the town has? What is the department's priority? Um what is the impact on service to residents or businesses? How is the benefit distributed? Um are there economic and environmental benefits? Does it have an impact on the operating budget? What is the availability and likelihood of external funding, so grant or something like that? What is the risk and impact of a failure of an asset? Uh and what is the impact on internal effectiveness or efficiency? Um and I should say that the scoring methodology can be great because it, you know, provides us an objective way of looking at things, but it's not. As though we take the list, score it and then say to Ryan, here you go, just put your stamp on it, it's just one piece of the puzzle so that um there's some um starting point for discussion. So um oftentimes, top scoring projects make it into the plan, but a lower scoring project could make it into the plan, a top scoring project might not make it into the plan for whatever reason. All right, now I'm gonna turn it over to Rick.
Thanks, Sarah. Um I'm gonna talk a little bit about the, what the town has spent historically on capital and how we projected what the town should spend um going forward. Um what, the question I got asked a lot when I was in my former job by all manner of local officials was, how much should we spend on capital? And obviously, that's a trade-off, it's a trade-off between the operating budget, the capital budget, school budget, op- you know, town budget. There's there's a million different trade-offs in the budgetary equation. So so when we look at um how much you should spend on capital, I would, my first question would always be, well, how much are you spending now? And they would say, oh, nothing and I'd say, well, you know, you you've gotta, you've gotta ratchet that up and the good news here is that the town of Hubbardston has made. A pretty decent investment in each of the, you know, the prior three years we looked at. Um you know, and that investment was pretty close to uh six percent, a a hair above six percent. So so let me talk a little bit about the strategy we use to figure this out. Um first of all, we look at non-excluded debt, what you have existing right now on the books. We also look at any authorized and unissued debt and make projections for what that debt service will be going forward, once it's ultimately issued. And I think you have a fire truck and a dump truck uh where the debt has not been issued yet, so we made some assumptions. Ten years on the fire truck, five years on the dump truck, I believe, uh and make some interest rates ass- assumptions based on current current borrowing rates, talking to your uh financial advisor, Dave Eisenfeld. Um so we also looked at the Quabin debt. Um you you're paying a debt assessment to Quabin and your your share of that is a little under twenty-five percent, twenty-three point three four percent, I believe was the the figure. So we project, I had the debt service schedule from the regional district and I projected that out, you know, for the ten years that um Ryan asked us to do. And the the last piece is the pay-as-you-go funding, which you typically uh appropriate free cash for. So when you add all those together and then divide that into what I call the net budget. And what is the net budget? The net budget is your total amount to be raised from your tax rate recap, less any enterprise funds, which you don't have right now. Less CPA, which I believe you do have, uh less any excluded debt, okay? And the reason we take out excluded debt is because we wanna look at what is your general revenue picture? Of that total general revenue, your tax le- this is essentially your tax levy, your state aid and your local receipts, okay? We pull out the available funds and we look at what is that as a percentage of that net budget? So in other words, what have you been devoting to capital from your existing recurring general fund revenues?
Where's new growth in there?
Uh that's part of your tax levy, so.
So that that would be?
Well, to the extent that you are taxing it, which I believe you're taxing pretty close to the limit, um under Prop two and a half, correct?
Yes.
So uh so the the new growth is in there to the extent that you appropriate it. If you if you don't use ten thousand of it, let's say, and you have excess levy capacity, then that ten thousand is not in there, but by and large, it's what you actually tax. What you actually receive in state aid, that's general aid, uh and what you actually receive in local receipts. So so that's that's how those uh percentages work and you can see that they're right around six percent, FY eighteen was a bit above six percent. Uh the average for those three years was six point one percent. So so then going forward, what we did is we projected out all those existing, uh the existing debt service, the authorized and non-issued. And then the Quabin uh debt assessment, we don't have anything here for pay-as-you-go because that hasn't been determined yet. Uh so so this is the the about midway through that page, that sums up all the existing stuff that you've already purchased that creates future obligations down the. Down the line in terms of debt, just like if you borrow money for a house, you need to look at what that, what those mortgage payments are out over the thirty years you borrowed it for. So so then we uh projected the net budget and we started from the nineteen figure, which was was up a bit from previous years in terms of the percentage increase. Uh but generally speaking, that net budget grows by about two hundred thousand a year, give or take. And so so essentially, if you use a six percent projection threshold, that six percent figure grows as your budget grows. So that preserves capital uh spending in relation to your budget growth. Which is a better method than say, well, we're gonna spend five hundred thousand on capital for the next ten years. But when you get out ten years and your budget has grown, that half a million may not be adequate anymore, so. So this is intended to to grow incrementally with your budget growth and to project that, we use Ryan's uh revenue and expenditure forecast. Which has a, has about a two point one percent increase in spending.
But aren't we just gonna be using that for the pay-as-you-go spending, free cash?
Yeah, well, the free cash is not included in the net budget, uh but it can still be a funding source to get you to that six percent, which is essentially what the town has relied on in the last three years for its pay-as-you-go budget.
So that's not robbing Peter to pay Paul, though?
Uh no, it's I I I think it's a way to look at how you're divvying up that general revenue between capital. You know, and to the extent you use free cash as a substitute that's not included in those calculations, you're freeing up money for other other things in the in that equation. But I I think it's a, it's a a fairly structured, methodical way to look at your spending and and to um project forward what you should be spending. I mean, granted, you could grow that if you decided to, you could increase it by a quarter percent a year. Um but six percent's a pretty good figure, you know, I've seen some that are a tiny bit higher.
Many of it are lower.
I've seen some that are virtually zero and and in that case, we try and ratchet them up over a five-year period by a half a percent a year, which.
On average, where do you wanna see it around? It's a good percentage.
Between five and eight, probably, um five and seven. I I have seen some considerably higher, but uh you know, you don't even wanna ask what community it was, you know, ve- very different set of circumstances, you know, so.
Good.
Okay, so um so Rick gives us this, um and. Ryan says yes or no, maybe, uh but in this case, we said yes, we played around with some other target percentages, but we felt that six was um, as Rick said, a very healthy number. And um sort of a a continuation of what the town had already been doing, so. Um Rick gives us the bottom line, which is, okay, after accounting for what you've already. Um paid for and put on your books, this is what you have available for general fund resources for the new capital and that was the bottom line of the last table you looked at. So we take that, Ryan and I take that and we uh take the top priority projects from the capital needs assessment and we try to compare the costs of those projects with what we have available. And as part of that, we say, okay, these particular projects are gonna be most likely debt-funded, so let's calculate the debt service on those projects so that we can find out what it will cost us in the fis- in that fiscal year.
So are we starting out at zero? Sorry to interrupt, but we are basically saying, prior to fiscal year twenty here, we're at zero for this analysis?
Um clarify what you mean, maybe you.
I, you know, uh the the top part of the the second sheet that I showed is your your existing obligations, so. So what I did was um I applied the six percent to your projected budget to get the the second to the last line in that slide. And then from that number, we subtract your existing obligations that you've already issued. So the so the bottom line there is what's available for what has typically been your pay-as-you-go, but um we we divvy that up between a little bit of borrowing and a little bit of pay-as-you-go, so.
Yeah, exactly, so so we're starting with a number in mind and for FY twenty, that number was two hundred and twenty-three thousand five hundred and twenty-eight. And then you can see over the five years, it grows.
Till the last year where it really goes up and that's because you have some roadwork debt that is, will be gone by two thousand and twenty-four. But that's that's the bulk of your existing general fund debt that's been issued right now.
Once you get debt-free, then you can really snowball again.
Well, then then you then you have, then you can start using that debt runoff too, um which is a very powerful way to to finance new new capital.
Yeah. Um, all right, so uh we take the top priority projects, we calculate for any debt-funded ones, we calculate debt service. Um we try to identify any additional grant opportunities that are out there. Um and assign a project to a funding source that is a grant and say to, basically saying to the department heads, this is a great project, go for a grant. And if you don't get the grant, then come back and we'll see, but there's a grant opportunity and you should go there first. Um so Ryan and I worked together on multiple iterations of a plan until the plan is what we call balanced, which means Rick is telling us we have X amount and the. Plan that we've developed is costing pretty much that amount, so you can see um the table on the bottom of the next slide shows how our final plan balanced. Oh, go back, Ryan, sorry, I don't know if the folks at home are looking at this or or that, but in any case, it's this one, yeah. So here you can see, I've copied, the top line is available general fund resources for new capital, which is. It's the same as the bottom line of Rick's table and then I'm telling you that based on the project plan for cash capital projects, you're spending a hundred and ninety-five, nine fifty-two and twenty and so on. For debt service, you're spending twenty-seven thousand in FY twenty and so on and then there's the total. Then the bottom line, the balance, shows what you have left or what you've overspent, so the plan that Ryan and I ended up with is fair, pretty much balanced for the first four years, we used pretty much all of the money, we we actually. We use pretty much all of the money, we we actually have a small deficit of seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars in FY twenty-one, which, you know, in the mix of things is is nothing. And then we do have a good amount left in FY twenty-four, uh, forty-six thousand. So that's, um, and it's fine to have a surplus in the plan, especially in an out year, because things can change as things go. And I know you have the committee that's gonna be taking o- ownership of this, so they might have something to say.
So the, just so I'm clear, so the pay as, the pay as we go, that's on this, that slide right there, um, the one that we're on, that is not to, um. It, I thought I just heard you say it's for capital projects.
Correct.
So it's not just to fund our normal operations?
In Hubbardston, essentially, that's free cash. That's how much free cash we'd have to invest to accomplish the plan, um, minus any change in revenues or our situation.
Yeah.
Whereas the debt would go into the operating budget, um, as part of the debt service line that, or section of the budget that we present every year.
Right.
Good thing about debt is you put in twenty-seven thousand, you can borrow two hundred, right, so you can fund those bigger projects.
Alright, so then the next three slides, the last three slides here show you a summary of wh- how the, uh, final CIP looks. So now we're just talking about those forty-five projects that made it into, quote, the final CIP. So first I've broken it down by funding source and fiscal year. Um, you can see that there are some local dollars, PEGO, that's your, that's your cash capital. So that's what you would probably use free cash to pay for, and then there's the debt. And as Ryan mentioned, the two hundred thousand dollars, you would be borrowing in FY twenty. But it would only cost you the twenty-seven thousand, which is the debt service.
And give us an example, so what is that two hundred thousand?
So that could be a dump truck.
Is that what it actually is in the plan?
Currently, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Um, and then we have chapter ninety money, which is money for the roads from the state. We have Mass Works Grant, which, um.
Strut Grant.
The Strut Grant, yep. Uh, then there are other grants and sources, and that's made up of a lot of different types of grants, smaller grants, and then there's the projects that are on the tip. So you can see how those, um, fall over the course of the five years. So as you can see, out of the seventeen, almost seventeen point six million dollars. Uh, the tip is accounting for more than half of that. So that's state and federal money that you're bringing into the community that you're not paying anything for essentially. Um, and the local dollars are approximately, what is it? Thirteen percent, um, so out of the seventeen point six million, about thirteen percent, I think, is is local dollars. So.
That's important in terms of messaging, cuz at a town meeting, you only see the Warren articles that talk about capital. It's only thirteen percent of the total investment that the town's made in capital. To include the monies that people have put up to get the engineering and all the other things for these major projects that are making up fifty-four percent of the capital.
Right, and that's, you know, you're leveraging local dollars to get projects. You're also leveraging your human resources to get projects coming into the community. Because even if you're not putting up local dollars, your department heads and the town administrator and other folks are spending time getting these grants. And it's, you know, it's working, I guess, is is the bottom line, which is great. The next slide shows the spending broken down by department. Um, and all of the roads and bridges are gonna be tagged or coded as Department of Public Works. Which is why you see that they have eighty-two percent of the spun, of the spending. Um, and that's very typical, because those projects are quite costly. They also have the most, um, number of projects at nineteen. Uh, there's, a lot of the departments are represented, especially the ones that you would think of, fire, police. Uh, the town administrator handled IT projects, the town center committee, library and the Quabin, uh, the district, Quabin Regional District. And this last one shows the project count and cost by asset type. Um, this, so this is another way of thinking about it, especially for people that aren't quite sure, like where would an asset fall in terms of the department hierarchy? Or structure, this shows you how the, like, what types of projects are being funded by asset type. So three bridge projects, representing a third almost of the entire, uh, plan. Facilities projects, IT projects, computers, servers, parks and open space, and then the road and infrastructure. That's a a major, um, cost center too, fifty-two percent, and then the vehicles and equipment. Fifteen projects, but only fi- a little bit over five percent of the entire plan accounted for by vehicles and equipment. Um, that's the end of the presentation, you know, we had a great time, uh, working with the town of Hubbardston. We found all the department heads and board members really helpful and easy to work with, and, um, Ryan was okay too, so.
Well, we only heard good things about you guys, just so you know, so across the board, without a doubt. You know, appreciate you dumbing it down as much as you could for us here. And I think what this shows us is, um, uh. If we wanna come up with a a really solid plan, um, to take care of a lot of different things. We have to separate what we led this off with, which was the building, into a different discussion.
Yes.
So I think that that makes it very easy for us to all to understand that that, that's just the reality of who we are, where where we're at. Even though we're we're organized, we have good teammates and all that sort of stuff, there's a certain way we're gonna have to operate when it comes to some of this sort of super large ones.
Yeah, well, it's not so different from other towns, you know, larger towns do the same thing, you know? It's 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 not unusual for a town to use the debt exclusion as a financing vehicle for a larger project. You know, a new town hall, a new school, something like that. I mean, it's just, just like in your own household, if you have a major purchase, you're purchasing a home or perhaps a new car. Those are appropriate things to issue debt for, um. But in in the case of large buildings, many communities use the debt exclusion. All you have to do is go to the local services database and pull down the, uh, debt debt exclusions by community. And you'll see, you know, it's, some of them use it universally for everything. Every major, you know, even minor building projects, but.
Not here.
No, no, I I don't think, I don't think that's the right way to do it, but, uh, some communities feel that they should put everything to the voters for these. Um, you know, whatever idea comes into somebody's mind and, uh, that gets put on the ballot, but.
An important piece of this, in two thousand twenty-four, you kinda just skate over it, but there's a tremendous amount of room, as Jamie, you mentioned, for decisions. So there's also some big projects coming up, whether that is a building or, um, fixing road and infrastructure, addressing the roof. Uh, cuz the center school roof is is gonna be need to be replaced in the next five to ten years. So that capacity there is a conversation that we're gonna have to have over the next couple of years. Um, because a lot of this could be shifted to say debt service, once that road project goes off. You're talking, um, today's dollars, a hundred and sixty thousand in that debt service, you know, extrapolated is is quite a bit of, uh, borrowing power. And as we discuss in our policies, we wanna keep our debt service at at three percent, so we need to replace that. That debt by investing in capital infrastructure, whi- which again will lessen the burden on the taxpayers, um, if there was that type of decision. So with stuff that, it's really important that we get volunteers for finance committee and capital planning and in this board, talking about altogether. With the master plan, what we want the town to look like. Um, and the only way to get there is to use and to adhere to all the financial policies, like generating five percent free cash, so we can pay for the pay as you go projects.
So how, um, you know, obviously, this is, and I don't mean this in any way, but this is sort of easy, right, this is a static condition. We haven't done anything yet, right, so we're just projecting these five years.
It's playing Sims, it's easy.
No, but, so you've got, so a year under your belt, right, and so as you talked about, we've gotta sort of reshuffle, um, and I guess you're experiencing this. You know, obviously, everything can go towards plan, but how difficult is it to sorta, when things don't go quite your way and certain, you know, things you don't quite get? How difficult is it to, or is it just a snowball effect where it becomes hard to reorganize things? Just a general question.
Um, it's, the first year of doing the plan is the most time-consuming. Um, and what will happen next year, or what should happen next year, is whoever is owning the plan and owning the process. Will take the, Ryan wi- and and the committee together, probably will take the capital needs spreadsheet. Which is that list of all of the projects that were requested. Submit that back to the department heads and say, what have we accomplished, what has changed in terms of project scope, in terms of project cost? In terms of project timing, and what new projects do you need to add? And so they'll be working next year on the FY twenty-one through twenty-five plan. So even though we've done five years and we have a baseline, things could change in the out years or years two through five of the plan that we've done for you. Um, priorities might change, you might find, you know, a lot of things can change, but it's not as onerous to do it next year. What does become onerous is onerous is if you don't do it for a few years and then you wanna start it back up again. Because then you've gotta go through the whole process again, um, and so there's momentum, um, that you gain and it and it tends to work well. Um, and so, you know, I think you can be successful. Plus, we've set up the, we call them the working documents, all those spreadsheets and things, and we hand those off. Um, and we hope that they're user-friendly and all of that, so, and we're always here, um, to answer questions next year or when, you know, years, years from now, if you. We'll be here.
Speak for yourself, I don't know.
He's already retired and he still can't stop working, so, you know, we'll see, but.
Question, so this chart here that shows the final project listing by department.
Yes.
In all the different years, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, are these, obviously, there's different things in different years. Is this recommendations by your group as to when to put these in? Almost like, uh, I mean, it kinda comes out to, you know, a priority list.
Right.
Or is this simply a financial, this one fits better here, this one fits better here?
It's triangulated, so the first thing we asked to do, and I feel like this is a local conversation, which is why I'm taking it over. So the, the first departments place their own priorities. Um, which, if you're a good department head, everything's an emergency, right? So, um, then you layered on, I asked them to independently score, so that we had a third party. And then after the department and their score, I added on, um, just a level of my scoring. And basically what that did was it fit projects into neat little spots.
And to add to that, the form that we all had to fill out as part of whatever committee, it actually had on there, when do you think? Like, for example, the the High Street sidewalk wouldn't come until we did Main Street, so we put it two thousand twenty-three or something for a hundred grand, like, so that would be part of that factor as well.
Yeah.
But the the departments, and that's why I'm pushing for the strict adherence to policy, cuz they should know. You shouldn't be planning for next year, you should be planning for twenty twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-four, you should be four years out. Next year s- should already pretty much be decided if we're doing the capital plan correctly. Um, so then then they're coming to you and saying, hey, my priorities changed, you know it's a true emergency, because they they've been planning for this for a couple of years and this is new. Um, that's the only way to get that, otherwise, if I used to be a department head, I need it now, right, you need it. Um, and they understand that and and worked really well to try and identify all the projects, so we could place them, knowing that we have limited resources as well.
Yep.
And when we did shift a project's timing to account for the fact that. We don't have the resources this year, but we might have some next year, so we're gonna shift it up, we inflate the cost a little bit, um, and we also capture the fact that we moved it. Um, and so that's sort of reflected in the, in the, um, the working spreadsheets, um.
If you just give me one more, um, example, the library is a great example of shifting projects and priorities. So what is the library gonna look like in five years? Is there still gonna be town offices in there? Do they want to go to the town and say refurbish the entire library? There's a lot of things being bandied about, um, with within the library. So they they've laid out projects as if today was gonna be five years from now, not knowing what the thing, but that could change immediately. If if a decision was made to say move the town offices out, then they might be more aggressive with a plan to fill that space. So those are the decisions that are coming, the more difficult ones than, say, funding the plan.
Any other questions?
Anything else? I got nothing else, huh?
Nope.
Alright, thanks.
Great, well, thanks for having us. And.
See you around.
Thanks.
Yes, yep, I'll be in touch with all of that, uh, stuff to transfer, and we're still working on the Gardner Building Regionalization thing. So I will be in your hair for a little while longer, because I'm working on that project.
Thanks, guys.
Alright, thank you guys.
Thank you. Okay. So we are on four, we've done A, um, and I guess Ryan, if you wanna give us the Borrego solar tax agreement update?
So we, town council reviewed, um, the fin- I'll call it the final, final, final agreement. Uh, they're okay with it, Borrego's okay with it, assessors reviewed it, they're okay with it, so we're just waiting for Zach to come back in with two checks and a signature. And sign that tax agreement, so, um, everybody's work on that was great. Appreciate the board's patience, but we did get that done and I believe we got it done right, so maximum value and efficiency from our departments.
Okay, um, thanks, and then, so the police policy notification?
So in your packet, I sent it to you a couple of weeks ago, uh, chief continued, so he corrected me, I said he had about thirty policies, he actually has about two hundred. His goal is to do thirty this year, so I misspoke, um, so he's trying to send you four or five at a time. Um, the way this works is if you have a disagreement with the policy, you would send it back to him to rewrite it. Um, that's sort of the power of the board here. So, um, if there's no issue with the policies as they're revised, then you would approve your or waive your notification and then they would become policy again.
Anyone have any comments on any of the, uh, police policies? I appreciate them updating them. Okay, so you you wanna get get a vo- motion from us?
Yes.
Someone wanna make a motion?
I'll make the mo- motion to, uh, accept the police policy notification, do I have to waive the notification or the?
Motion to waive.
Motion, waive.
Second to motion.
Re-discussion, on favor?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
You'll, we'll be getting about five every other meeting or so.
Fabulous. And then, so similar with the finance policies?
These are the last four, so we could just take a moment and appreciate that. The, uh, tax recap policy, I'll start with that. Um, this was, again, these are the, sort of the policies and procedures that guide our finance department, they're really important, but they they get pretty detailed. So we spent a good two hours as a finance team, uh, ripping through these, and the finance committee will also go through them as well. The major parts of the the tax recap. Um, it sets December fifteenth as the the drop dead date for getting the tax recap into deal, in approved by DLS. This allows us to send out the, uh, tax bills in time for January one, which is really important for our revenue stream. So we beat that by a couple of weeks this year, next year we're gonna beat that day by a couple of weeks, but this sets it in stone. Um, it also puts multiple reviews into policy, so DLS has to approve it. Uh, each, the finance team has to approve it, you do, the finance committee, um, so it puts those protections in place. And also lays out the full process, so if our whole finance team left tomorrow, um, people would come in and know what to do, uh, the next day in terms of filing the tax recap.
Okay.
So I'll just keep explaining them unless someone stops me.
Oh, good.
The next one is the year-end closing policy. So this is something we wanna tighten up and to get into writing, uh, once the fiscal year ends, how do we close the year and get those documents into, um.
We don't have it on, I don't have it on mine. You?
Should be a folder called Finance Policies in the.
Oh, 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 sorry, we're still under Finance Policies, sorry, my bad.
There's only, there's a couple more.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so this again, in- instructs the departments on how to close, set some dates, so that we close on time. We don't have a lot of those end-of-year transfers that were annoying last year, um, which we are expecting right now to not. If happy, but here it was close to as many as we had last year. And it sets dates to close the book, so we hit the important deadlines of, uh, establishing our, or certifying our free cash in time for town meetings. And setting the tax rate. This is kind of the process before the tax rate process. Heavily reviewed by our finance team, accountant, assessors and treasurer collector. So the next one is tax enforcement. Everybody loves taxes, so this is the way that we gave you a presentation this year on tax title. We're trying to prevent that, get people to pay, um, uh, their fair share on time. So this creates timelines for tax enforcement, enforcement, sets out clear policies and goals in terms of, um, how we are going to make sure. Everyone pays pays their fair share, their fair procedures. Um, we made sure that they were doable, so that we're not just saying we're gonna do this, but that, uh, the timelines are in place for the treasurer collector. Uh, to establish them and also stuff that fits within our our budget and our ability to do. So if we had an unlimited budget, we could go after every, uh, delinquent taxpayer, um, in in X way. We have to do it in Y way because of our budget, and this lays out how we're gonna do that. And then it is.
So we can keep a ninety-eight percent tax collection, right?
Yeah, and we're, I think we're gonna beat it this year, so, um, with any luck. We're d- we're doing well in in taxpayers, a lot of them, when we contact them, they just say, I didn't know, and then they fix it, and it's as easy as that. Uh, there are some that I think, I don't think I'm fooling anybody by saying we'll never pay their taxes, but if we could get the list down to that. Uh, there are some that I think, I don't think I'm fooling anybody by saying we'll never pay their taxes, but if we could get the list down to that, it would be in, in really good shape, and then we can focus all our resources on those problems. Rather than, you know, just a large list of people that it's easily fixable. And then, um, payment plans, so we might have something at town meeting that allows for, um, a little bit more flexibility in terms of payment plans, that would come during the warrant process. But right now, it, it establishes by state law what we're allowed to do, which is we can allow for two years with certain payments made to pay back taxes. Uh, we cannot lessen or take anything less than what is owed, um, so that does provide a little, little restriction, and that may be good or bad, I don't know, that'll be up to the town. And then the last policy, which we can all celebrate, is spending in excess of appropriation, so by I'm not saying this to this board, but not allowed to spend over what's appropriated by town meeting, but occasionally emergencies happen and things happen, so this lays out that policy and procedure. You'll remember that from the transfers that we did last year, um, things like snow and ice are allowed to be spent in deficit, so this lays that out in black and white. Um, and, and gives us more policy and strength when talking to departments about having proper payment plans, staying within appropriation, and matches our goal, which is quarterly reporting to you on, on places where we're in trouble. Or, eh, or good, you shouldn't always say trouble, sometimes makes you.
Yeah, I think, yeah, this, this, this is a good one. Just in the fact that it exists. Okay, so what do you need from us on this?
Motion to accept the finance policy.
These, these policies, and then, um, next year, when we go over policies, it'll be only giving you changes, and then the slate will stay the same, so.
Can I make, I make the motion to accept the finance policies as presented?
Awesome.
Discussion, on favor? Yes, yes, alright, thanks for your work on that.
It was fun.
It's fun.
Alright, so we are at, uh, military leave. Um, okay, so, Ryan, so, full disclosure, Ryan and I spoke about this a little last week maybe?
Yes, Ryan.
Ryan has expressed, uh, previously how, how, um, the, I don't wanna use the word conflict, use the word whatever you want, but obviously this directly affects you uh, as far as this policy and, and, um.
I'm the only town employee that's currently in the military, so any military leave policy by default would only impact me. Um, but I'm also under contract and don't necessarily fall within the purviews of the policy, so I'm uncomfortable
So, so can I ask you?
Applying this to me, but of course I'll provide expertise.
Can, can you just give us a, a little bit of a background? Can you, can you first explain, I know it's probably very detailed, but the general bullet points, the main bullet points of USARA?
So, in, under, it's, USARA was essentially created because it's difficult to find employment, um, when you're in the mass national guard, because your obligations to the military are, are non, there's no negotiating there, so if they order you to do something, you go, and then you need protections in some cases from your employers. It's a little bit different in the municipal world, cuz typically municipal governments, um, have set procedures and policies in place, it's especially important in the civilian sector. Uh, so, I should say the non-government sector, that's a very military term I used. So the, um, USARA lays out some things that we cannot get around, um, so this policy just essentially accepts USARA and then layers on top of it. So, when I was hired, I was asked to look at military leave policy because I included it as part of my negotiation, what is the, the military leave policy? Like many small towns in Massachusetts, our policy deferred to the state policy, which you can only do by accepting a local option, which we did not accept, so essentially we, we had no policy. Um, except for USARA. That is fine, as long as the, the town does not wanna provide paid military leave, uh, to, to s- uh, soldiers, sailors, marines, etc.
Because basically what USARA does is says, you're gonna get your job back.
Yes.
But you're not gonna get paid for not being at your job.
Correct, they cannot force, and you would definitely look at a small business and they couldn't necessarily afford it, so you're not necessarily guaranteed your job, but a job of similar.
Sure.
Uh, statute.
But we, so we negotiated five paid, um, leave days, you, I don't know what words to use, five paid military leave days, is that, had a word it?
Yes.
Just cuz we were negotiating a number of different items, that's what we came to, right?
Yes.
I mean, there's no real full-on rhyme or reason. And so what we have the option to do is, is that, is just a contractual obligation that we have, um, with Ryan at this point. But in, in either parallel with, with modifying that, his existing contract to mirror what we ultimately come up with as far as an actual policy, cuz we didn't have one, we'd have, that's just an agreement, uh, a, a piece of an agreement that we have. We have the, the, um, the option to, to keep Ryan at his five, cuz he, you know, said he would.
And signed a contract.
Signed a contract, um, and then set a policy for some other number, that ma- maybe makes more sense in reality, uh, for the future. And either have it, had it, have it like that, or we can discuss and set a policy with a certain amount of days, and then amend Ryan's contract to affect that. So that's what we're, we don't necessarily have to decide that tonight, I don't think, or do you want us to decide that tonight?
No. This is just an opening of discussion.
It is, it is, so, a- again, I, I guess, uh, does everyone understand sort of what we're talking about here?
Well, what I, what I understand a little bit, Ryan, on that is where it says, uh, I guess I'm just confused, where it says option one, adopt the state statute, or option two, mimic the state option. So what i- what is the, to me, they sound the same, so what's the difference?
So like a, so like any good local option, the state has a, basically a blanket option that you can go to town meeting and say, we accept, um, what is it, fifty-nine? I should know this, I'm a terrible former VSO, thirty-three fifty-nine, which says, um, and forgive me for being a little I don't know, I don't like it, basically it says not to exceed seventeen days in the fiscal year, and then not to exceed seventeen days in the federal year. And not to exceed thirty-four days in any year, which to anybody who reads it doesn't make any sense. Basically what they're saying is July one to June thirtieth, you can't, you can get seventeen days paid military leave. In the federal year, which is October one to September thirtieth, you can get seventeen. So then, there's been a huge discussion, literally for decades, over that interim time, does that mean you have to use your seventeen days, which
Yeah.
historically is the time you would do annual training, so it kinda made sense, but most towns, when they get sued, um, they just default to giving thirty-four days.
In a calendar year, or?
In a calendar year of paid military leave, which for someone like me would be seven, seven weeks of military paid leave, which is a lot for, you know, a person with my responsibilities, so um, that, that is certainly acceptable, but then the town would have to decide how it interpreted that seventeen, seventeen, and thirty-four. So another completely acceptable option is to come up with your own, or to mimic the states, which means saying some do thirty-four days of paid military leave, some do seventeen cuz they believe that was the original intention, and then any number between zero and seventeen, uh, is better than, than what we have now. So the, just to put it in context, the average guardsman does two days a month and two weeks a year, so that's about ten days of mandatory time. In today's current climate, in the op temple for most guard units, it's somewhere between two weeks and three weeks, which is about fifteen days. And then if you do any professional development, which you need to do to progress, um, or if you're in a, in a, in a higher rank like I am, you're gonna do extra days here and there because you're just required to. So the average soldier does, soldier sails, sailor, marine, or coasty does, um, anywhere from, from ten days, which is the, the, probably the minimum, to, could be up to thirty, forty, depending.
So this is separate from getting called, uh, called on a deployment?
Yeah, so deployment is Title X, which is a whole different ballgame, and this, this would say to, to that's, that person who's being deployed, um, we're here when you get back. Or you would get to use all of your leave days that are allowed by the town's policy, uh, up until, so let's say you left on January one and you did five days. You'd be paid till January fifth, and then you would return when you returned. And there's also, I don't wanna get too crazy down the rabbit hole, but there are schools that are sixty days long, right, so this addresses that and saying we'll give you your leave days and then you're off our books until you come back from military duty and then you return back.
So this is really just a, a compensation thing from our standpoint, because, because, you know, we'll, we'll obviously have to get, let's say it was a four-month deployment, right? God forbid, but, um.
That would be a blessing, four months.
Oh, okay.
If I get deployed, I'll see you in twelve.
Okay, uh, right, so, we would be looking for an interim, you know, and all that, um, and having to incur costs of an interim as well as paying someone who's not here. So that's what we have to sort of see, is what our town can afford, you know, of course, of course we wanna do both, you know, to the maximum extent.
Well, no, it doesn't affect the deployment, cuz we're not gonna, you're, if we, if we adopt or mimic the state option, let's say we say we're gonna get thirty-four days. We're only on the hook for thirty-four days, after thirty-four days, then you, you, you would, or somebody else in the, in the military would live off of their pay from the military, not from the town.
Okay, so that's what section ten is, or what you were just talking about? It's a full-on deployment?
So the town would only be on the hook for what it authorized, so if it did thirty-four days, which I think is too much, but if it did thirty-four days, then, um, I'm gonna get killed by my military friends, but, then that's what you'd be on the hook for, but you, you would incur that cost plus the interim, so there might be some financial ramifications there, paying two people for a month.
And some of this is weekend work, right, like one weekend a month?
Yes, so that really comes into play when you're talking about, uh, public safety, DPW, uh, the folks that, that may come in that serve, we don't have any right now, but that you may hire someone you know, relatively soon, they tend to attract that type of person, um, then you're talking about leave days that come on weekends and other things, so there's overtime implications, et cetera.
Well, that's in snow removal, things like that, right?
Do they get paid by the government?
They do, so we are paid for our service, state active duty is pretty low-paid.
And, and when they're deployed to active duty, that's, is that a different pay scale?
It's the same pay scale.
Same pay scale.
The, it's a little incorrect, so, um, if you're over, for more than thirty days, you get a different basic housing allowance than you do BAH type two or type one. Uh, way too complicated for, for this, but.
It also has to do with rank also.
Yes.
And so if I could just, I'm gonna read this real quick, you guys might have already looked at it, but I, I just wanna understand this. This is a reemployment timetable, so to be eligible for protection under USARA, the service member must report back to work or apply for reemployment within the following guidelines. One to thirty days of service, report next scheduled workday, so that means if you're going one to thirty, you gotta come right back to work.
Yeah.
Thirty-one to a hundred and eighty days of service, apply within fourteen days following completion of service. The word apply wasn't in that previous one, what does that mean? Do you know?
Uh, apply for reinstatement, is I think what it means.
Back at the civilian job?
Yes.
Okay, and then the other one is a hundred and eighty-one plus days of service, apply within ninety days following completion of service. So within that, say there's ninety days, okay, so, so say you, you take eighty-nine days before you apply for, who's paying? And I realize we're only on the hook for thirty-four, if we say thirty-four, but if, in that sort of scenario that I'm saying there, are you just on your own, so you, you've been discharged, and you've just, you've been walking around for eighty-nine days, not going to work?
So you would have terminal leaves.
Okay.
Um.
Not, not the term.
So you'd have leave at the end of your tour, uh, hopefully you'd had some, like, when you deploy, you can't use leave, obviously, so you have some at the end.
Okay.
Um, the ninety days is allowed for typically, under USARA, medical treatment, readjustment, so you want your employee back, and back, not taking two weeks and then saying, you know, I'm gonna need more time.
Gotcha. Gotcha.
Get your affairs in order.
But that's, USARA is non-negotiable, that you have to allow for that.
Yep.
So what do you think's a fair amount of days then the town should offer folks to, 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 like, like you said, it, you know, do your duties, advance in rank, and certainly I give a lot of credit to anybody who's willing to sign up to do these things, so I, my personal opinion is, you know, I think we should support these folks that wanna do that. Um, but what do you think's a fair number for somebody who, uh, who can, can do that and advance and, and not be hindered and worry about, you know, making bills paid or anything like that?
Um, a little uncomfortable giving a number, but the, I, I will say, there should be.
Well, you, you just, he, he just said thirty-four is too much.
Yeah, he did, but he didn't mean that, he still wants, I think that's the number I'm paying towards.
So, so, full, full canter, I lobbied pretty hard to turn that into thirty-four in my previous job, so, um, not saying I'm against it, it's just, to adopt it blanket as a town who's never had it, I don't know if that's the right approach, to just say we're gonna give the maximum days possible, cuz we don't know the exposure to that, um, the.
And what's the risk of exposure? Is that there's overlapping leaves, right, for a small town with, say, there's three or four employees that?
I think it would be different too if it was a DPW versus a town administrator, so he's on the salaries.
Or. So if a police officer took thirty-four days off, then you'd be paying overtime to cover those shifts, plus paying that person thirty, so it can add up. In cities, it gets really expensive, which is why they try and control, um, this.
Yeah.
So, to answer, I'm sorry, to answer your question, the, I think there should be something, I said that when I was negotiating, so, um, a, a town should offer that incentive because of.
I'll make, okay, five, huh? Dropping the hammer.
Stingy.
No idea what I'm.
I was on the phone with my, I was like, this guy, you know, I'm just kidding, um. You know, but it's, it's where the town is comfortable starting, and I think anything is better than zero, I'd be proud to have s- helped move it forward. Um, so the, I told you the average days
Yep.
is, it's fourteen days, but you have weekends in there, so, plus, usually you have one or two extra, like, weekend days that you need in there. And then this professional development, so, I'd say that lands you somewhere between ten and seventeen is kinda typical, if you're gonna adopt something.
The other, uh, branches of service.
Ryan, I just have another question.
I just want a, a question on that, the other branches of service, okay, other than national guard. Uh, a person serves and, um, is discharged, but they have a reserve obligation.
Yes.
Is this cover that aspect of, uh, the reserve requirement as opposed to, uh, in your case, it's a guard re- requirement?
If, if you're in the
Across the board, is it?
If you're in the active reserves, these, these terms, they're crazy.
Yeah, inactive, inactive.
So if you're in the active reserves, meaning you're drilling as a reservist, that's the same as being in the guard, uh, the days are different, the commitments, you don't have to be called up during, say, hurricanes, for example, but
Mm-hmm.
um, which is also a thing.
Did you know the Coast Guard guys were called coasties? I didn't know that till tonight.
I did know that.
Uh, you did? Well, I don't know.
Uh, Ryan, question on, uh, just the pro- proof of, uh, you know, it says, yeah, if you want thirty days, it's time to request a letter from the employee commander, employees commander, um. Is it hard to prove, like, say you're gonna, I'm going away for, uh, maneuvers or whatever next weekend, is it hard, like, don't other employers want it, just proof of that? Other than a thirty-day more, uh, a thirty-day deployment?
Yes, and we.
So it's easy, like, don't you have a stub or something, say, look, I went, you know, that, to prove?
It is, it is pretty easy, you'd have orders, a letter from your commander, or it's all doable.
I would just say I would want proof of any leave.
The law's written to try and prevent the, the town, the city, the municipality from blanket denying things, uh, cuz that's happened, uh, especially when you're dealing with, say, eighteen to twenty-five-year-old soldiers who don't have the self-advocacy, who get scared by an employer who says, if you, if you go do that extra duty, um, where, you know, no, you can't, et cetera, you'll lose your job, um, it's very rare, but it does happen, and that's why it exists, but on the other side of the coin um, you wouldn't want me, as your town administrator, just volunteering for every order that came up and taking advantage of a policy, um, because I knew that it was in place. It's also rare, but the town needs to protect from that, so these laws are like a balance between the two, you really wanna reward military service, I don't think anyone doesn't. Um, it's, but it's the liabilities that can be created, et cetera, that you wanna be careful of. It's a terrible way to say it, especially as a veteran, I could, but it is, it is true, I'm trying to give you the best advice possible.
So the, let's say fifteen days, um, just a round number, that's automatically paid, or that has to come out of vacation, your accrued vacation?
So it would be, if you were approved of military leave, it would be added on to.
To the vacation.
So you would get fifteen days of military leave, only to be expended if you use them for military purposes.
With no buyback options, or any of that sort of stuff?
I would stipulate that, yeah.
Okay. Yeah?
Cuz right now, for example, I, I probably do twenty, fifteen to twenty military days a year, so I'll probably use two, three weeks vacation to, to make sure I still have the, the.
Yeah, and when you say buyback, do you mean like no carryover?
Correct, all the stuff that would apply to anything left over, yeah.
Okay, yeah, no carryover.
Yeah, cuz the point of the policy is you served and we rewarded you during that year, reset, reward again, not to accrue a massive liability for military service.
We have a DPW guy who's, obviously, uh, gets whatever, twenty days, fifteen days, whatever we give him, give him, um, and they their drills are on weekends if they're not needed at DPW, I mean, at the end of the year, this will have fifteen days to use whenever they need to.
They would have annual training, so, it's probably a minimum of ten they would use.
Have you ever seen, I hate to even ask this question, but have you ever seen where they have, uh, there's been a policy where, um, what's been adopted for compensation from the current employer is the delta between the normal wage in the civilian job and the, what you receive at military service?
Yeah, so there is a sta- a state statute for longer orders.
Okay.
So that's for, um, the difference between base pay, it's usually base pay, and, uh, what you would be making normally, and say your job as a as a, uh, DPW worker, policeman, firefighter, it's really hard to calculate sometimes.
I'm sure.
You would take an H, I wouldn't be comfortable doing, I would have to have an HR professional help me, cuz what counts is your normal salary, does it include overtime, s- details, et cetera?
Sure.
Um.
Okay.
It's doable, and it's definitely worth it, and people learn it, but.
Was there anything else you think you need to let us know about, you know, the, the, this policy we haven't already discussed, um, as far as the guts of it?
Just how uncomfortable I am. Just how uncomfortable I am with having it.
Alright, so I'm I'm gonna suggest first of all that instead of going to the town meeting option, we mimic, we do option B.
You feel comfortable about understanding it?
I do.
Okay.
I do, so I I would suggest that we um, only if you guys are comfortable.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm just kidding.
I would suggest that we we go to mimic the state option, so we have a our own policy that we can we can amend and change, rather than if we adopt the state where I think we're kinda stuck with what they have.
Agreed, agreed.
Um so I would suggest first of all, if you guys are comfortable mimicking the state option, and it's just a matter of how many days you wanna give.
Seventeen, how about seventeen, cuts in half from the thirty-four that was on there, and it's, we don't know anyway, so it's there's the rationale.
Tell them.
So what do you reckon? Seventeen.
Seventeen.
The half of the thirty-four that was there. What do you think?
Yeah.
It seems.
Alright, so I'll make a motion to approve uh the military uh leave option, which is option two, as stated, mimic the state option. With a calendar year, days of seventeen.
Second emotion.
And this discussion, um do we wanna within this motion or to make another or just have it as another discussion, discuss. Discuss three minutes, uh whether to amend Ryan's current contract to reflect our current policy. And with the with the thought that we didn't re and I will just take, I didn't negotiate that part of it because I had any real basis for it. Um so I don't know, uh that's just a, this is discussion here.
I think it's a good idea, but we should probably do this motion first and then make a second motion to do that.
Alright, sounds good. Any further discussion? On favor? Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Alright, I'll make another motion to uh amend uh Ryan's employment contract to um for military leave to follow along the adopted policy for the town.
Second emotion.
Um so in discussion, you you'll draft up, cuz we wanna know with that, you'll draft something up for us?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
What do you have, personally have?
Five.
Five days, okay.
So you wanna do that amended based on, you know, uh future uh review of the terminology that, you know, something like that? What he said? Second?
Yeah.
It's my job to recommend here, so I would recommend having that apply on July one.
Okay. Amendment?
The July one of nineteen? Or July one of retrospective?
The next was for. July one of next year.
Okay, so I'll I'll. If it slightly amend my motion to uh have that apply for uh as of July one, two thousand nineteen, taken effect as of July one, two thousand nineteen.
Taking effect as. Second that.
Another amendment?
No amendments.
Okay, uh any further discussion? On favor?
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So now that that's awkwardness is over, if I could just say, um I appreciate that as someone who's hidden their military service to try and get a job before. Uh who's coached guardsmen and reservists to take it off their resume, and if you remember in my interview, I didn't wanna talk about it until you guys brought it up. Uh it's for that reason, because when you have lots of service members in the guard and they're doing their military duty, it can create some significant overtime problems and other liabilities. I don't I don't think we'd have that here unless we hired a rash of guardsmen, which I hope we do, but um. As as someone who's gone through that, uh I appreciate it.
One of the high points of uh your interview and discuss talking about things with you was was the fact that you were in the military, and there was another gentleman here who was also, I think, a captain in the. In the army, um I think the reserves, and uh to me, you guys stood out head and shoulders for everybody else, and so.
It can be, it can be difficult, it can also be helpful, so I don't wanna say it's all negative, but um policies like this help attract people with those qualities, and that. Gentleman you're talking about is now the town uh administrator in Maynard, and we talk all the time, so.
Really?
Greg.
He was another, he was a great guy.
We talked on Friday, he's doing really well, so.
The bigger budget?
Much bigger. More staff.
Alright, so one more item of new business here, we have the hay license, um uh that we're.
So I hoped that Brian Bullock would allow me to do this joke, but he said um at some point, someone's gonna talk to you about a hay license, and I tried to make it my whole career without dealing with a hay license, so good luck. So I did a lot of research on this, texted him, said thank you. Uh but so this is a revenue source for us, we have conservation land um on Mount Jefferson, and we hay this land, we get.
Oh, we know.
So.
So this thing's called the plug?
Bobolinks.
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 Okay.
Yeah.
So this is something, I've talked to a few farmers, it's a it's an attractive bid, so we wanna put this out to bid to see best price possible for this land. Um I re I reviewed this based off the old bid, and I also sent it to Open Space and.
Jassy Direct.
Conservation, Ja Jassy has looked at it. Um and they're they've given their approvals for for this bid, so if this board's comfortable with the IFB, then we would send it out. Probably around February first to try and um procure a license by, say, mid-March, we might set the date for, just to give it some time. And uh get a new five-year contract in place.
So it mimics the old dates, the dates that we talked about ad nauseam, as far as when the hays could be done, whatnot, it's mimics the same ones that we had previously.
So the change to your previous vote, then um just change the payment to November first, just to give more more time for the farmer to pay. So they would pay August first and November first, it used to be October first.
Okay.
Just based on the history of payment, it made more sense to me.
Mm-hmm.
I'll make a motion to uh accept the amended uh hay lease contract as presented.
I'll second that. Discussion?
It's a um sorry, it's just it's an invitation for bid.
Invitation for bid as presented.
I'll second that. Discussion, on favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
On this. Okay, old business, anyone got anything they wanna bring up at this point?
No, just the flag.
Yeah, flag.
Right.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, so um there was a mis it's my fault, so there was a miscommunication between the tree warden, Rick is his name.
Rich.
Rich, who also does tree work in town, assisting the tree warden occasionally, and um this board, so. The tree warden was out of town, and I was trying to get his blessing on the fix, and then also fulfill the board wanted to know about the fix, so. It could have happened earlier, I think we have a thing in place, I emailed um Jeff just to make sure, but it's essentially a very small. Um manicure of the trees in order to allow the flag, so he said there would be one branch that was like this, but otherwise uh good conservation.
Mm-hmm.
And um we can get that done, so.
Alright.
And he was gonna clean out anything dead as well.
Let's do it.
Okay.
Poiler ground thaws.
Yeah.
Right.
Any other old business? Alright, Ryan, you wanna take us through your town administrator report?
Yes. One sec. Okay, so first uh FY twenty budget update, so um big news is we certified our free cash at four hundred and one thousand five hundred and thirteen. Our policy that we passed was aiming to create five percent free cash in our budget, which would have been four fifty-one, one fifty, so we came pretty close. Um and I think with some of our revenue projection goals, we should be able to hit that five percent every year. Fingers crossed, so um thank you to the accounting team for that, we also got some good news, the Worcester Regional Retirement System, they make you come out to a breakfast before they give you your.
Assessment.
Assessment, basically you sit down and everyone's flipping through the thing to find out their assessment, so the guy next to me was really mad, I was really happy, we went down one percent, we're projecting a nine percent increase there, so. Uh that's not gonna happen every year, but we can celebrate it when it does. Um I'm gonna present the budget to the staff, but basically a final first draft to the staff, um as staff meeting on January thirtieth. I do have in here that the presentation's gonna be on the fourth, our budget count, February fourth, our budget calendar has it on February fourth. I will not have the school numbers until the fourteenth, so I'm asking the board to allow a change to the budget calendar for me to present our proposed budget on the nineteenth, so we can have some real school numbers.
Makes sense, yep.
That's okay.
Other assessments to Rutland Regional, I just feel like um one of the problems you have with the budget last year was having it changed a lot, I feel like we can give you a real good first draft on the nineteenth as opposed to the fourth.
Okay.
Also news there, the um we're meeting, trying to meet with the schools to set up a date where they give us like their first draft assessment date, so we can have this not be a thing in the future. We get it on this date, and then we present our budgets following that, uh there's still a chance that the budgets change, obviously, it's the way the schools work, but um we'd like to get that agreement in place. The library roof procurement, we'll be opening those tomorrow, uh we had a lot of registered uh bidders, so we're expecting some activity there. Um we'll have an update for you at your next meeting as to who was awarded the library roof bid, uh NALT Architects is working with us a lot, they're really professional, it's been great to work with them. Software conversions, uh version eight of our assessing software, which is a necessary fix, but also a big upgrade in our service capabilities, um we've contracted with them. And um they're going to install those in April, that upgrade in April, is part of that Community Compact IT grant that we put in for, so this is already paid for. And then we're also upgrading our um. Server there as part of that, I don't know what a server is, but if you do this motion.
Yeah.
And then we're demoing building department software to try and uh upgrade that as well, and we're probably gonna beat Gardner on that, so I feel good about that, and I made fun of the mayor about that. Uh Green Communities Grant, so this was something that's kinda was on the radar when I first started and was pushed off for other priorities, but we're back. It looks like we're gonna be able to apply for this Green Community status in the fall, we've already gotten our criteria one accepted, I'll have more updates on this, but um. MRPC is taking the lead on this, and we should get that in place, we'll probably have some warrant article that goes with it, uh the big thing would be adopting a stretch code. Which is the building code, which has been changed a lot, and we're gonna bring the the building commissioner in to talk to you about that, so you understand it more, um but they have that in Gardner. Fire union negotiations, I'm starting those on Thursday, we're meeting with the fire union on Thursday, so we should have some updates for you there.
Who you meeting with?
Uh Troy.
Just Troy?
Yeah. Just me and him. So we'll have uh some updates about that first meeting um at your next meeting. Monte Tech, I went to Monte Tech last week, I met with the superintendent and the business director, uh we talked a lot about how we can strengthen our relationship, get more information from them, get their projections earlier. I think it's important to note that their budget process is completely different than any of ours, so they put a draft budget out in March, and then they don't, they still haven't approved their nineteen budget yet. But they did tell us our assessment's gonna go down, so we'll forgive them for that, but the uh that means there's changes in that budget, and we definitely won't know that number until until March. You might know that, I did not, um I did get to see the school's machinery shop, the carpentry and their cabinet making departments, they're, that is an impressive school, they do some. Really cool things, and I did deliver the letter that you asked me to, thanking them for the lean-to and for the wreath that they donated. Uh I got a lot of employee recognition this week, so I wanted to recognize our senior workers, they're managed by Claudia, they work throughout the town, and they help us organize. Reduce file backlogs, provide better service and information, um they're extremely dedicated, doing work that allows the town staff to do. Other things, without them, we would be just doing uh backlogs and files all the time, so they're really important, they they help, uh pretty much every department has has used them in some way. And then um we all fight over their different talents to see how we're gonna use them. Also really wanted to recognize, um I went today to a chimney fire and observed the uh fire fire department working, they also had. Uh some mutual aid in Gardner, and I believe one other spot, plus two calls today, and it was nine degrees out. The police department was there directing traffic, and they do their community work, again, it was nine degrees, our DPW went by with the sidewalk plow. Um and we're out there for twenty-six hours on Monday, clearing snow to make our roads look nice, it's just. I was out there for ten minutes, everybody made fun of me, and I came back inside, uh I just appreciate them having to work out for a couple hours in conditions like that today. And some topics coming up, uh budget presentations, we as we just talked about, fire union, CBA, again, talked about it. Uh still wanna work on our community benchmarking, is sort of a goal for the end of this fiscal year. Our updated road maintenance plan, um I've had Travis digging deep in the weeds on this, wanna have our public budget hearing and present a a a plan for your approval. And then uh human resource policy updates, we'll be pivoting from the budget to human resource for pretty much the rest of the year.
Alright, thank you. Uh okay, so we've got town administrator review process up there next, we'll uh.
Yeah, this is just more to um start the conversation of, it's believe it or not, been here one year on February twenty-first.
Yep.
So um we have started the review process for all employees, and uh you're responsible for my review.
Mm-hmm.
So just wanted to see how you wanted to do that, how I can help facilitate and get it on the radar, cuz it's one of those things that's easy to forget.
Right, uh and is important not to forget, so uh last time we we did a um. Uh a fairly standard rating system, right, for your first review?
So we took the same form that we review employees and um.
How how did you find um that applicable to your, you know, our reviews and your understanding and whether it's relevant towards. H- helping you understand what, you know, um we're thinking of things, that is that a valuable tool, or is, do you think we should think about some doing something else?
I think so, I liked the individual feedback, um you're all different, and you all require different things, and that's important for me to know. Um plus it gives me a better base to improve from, which is my goal, so I did like the, it was sort of more encompassing when everybody did it.
Alright. Format, okay, so you guys are, everybody alright, we're doing it sort of the same way we did it last time?
Yeah.
So we'll just sort of keep it on the agenda, I guess, whatever makes sense, getting it on there, so that we have a sort of a deadline, I think what we did last time is we, did we discuss it, um. In executive session? No.
No, no.
It's just straight up an open session, but um.
Yeah, we did, yeah.
So you did, this is allowed as long as this prescription is followed, you did it on your own.
Yep.
Submitted it to me for consolidation.
That's right.
We gave it to Jamie.
Didn't, weren't you the compiler?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
We compiled it and didn't deliberate.
Correct.
Um and then it was presented in public to discuss.
Mm-hmm, okay, there a anybody else wanna be a compiler this time?
No, Jamie did fine.
Alright, sounds good. Thanks, Jamie.
Alright, Jamie.
Yeah.
Alright, uh but let's, you know, we're getting close, so what'd you say, what date is your, I mean, I know it would have to be exact year, but.
February twenty-first is my.
February twenty-first, so um. Um. I guess maybe the 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 mid-March, is that alright with you, we'll we'll have um. We'll have the forms, maybe. I I'll send out the forms to everyone, okay, so we'll all have them.
That's my next question.
And then we'll we'll put it on the the whatever the that first March meeting is for uh an agenda item.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so we've got some appointments, um. Wanna take us through them, Larry?
Yep, Sean Dame, he is the alternate inspector of wires, Daryl Sweeney's the inspector of wires in town, um but. It looks like he will be out for a short period of time, so we, you know, it's also always good to have an alternate, we missed him at the last meeting. Um Francois Steiger, he is looking to be on the Affordable Housing Committee as a um resident, not as a planning board member, as he's the associate member. Uh Donna McGrath, she is looking to go on the Economic Development Committee, Brianna Whitney on the Historical Committee. Uh Carol Whitney as well on the Historical Committee, but that seems to be full, so she's gonna be going on as an alternate until somebody drops off. It's always good to have somebody in place just in case, um Caitlin Thiem, I know we had discussed this last time, we, I had received an email from Bill Shea. Regarding the fact that she has not been at meetings, um not answered emails, I did send her out an email as well. Letting her know that we did receive a letter stating that she hasn't been in attendance, has missed meetings, and I said, please respond by a certain date if you are still interested, and I did not hear from her. She was appointed at the meeting prior with her appointment to be effective in June or expired in June so July, um and she has also not been sworn in, so. Um we will accept that as a resignation, Alice Libdal, she's here, she's looking to go on the Affordable Housing Committee as a planning board member. And Roberta um Tivo as the Assessing Administrative Assistant, and Ryan can explain that one.
On the last two, um Alice is here to talk about the Affordable Housing Committee, also meeting with some of the members tomorrow, not a quorum to discuss. What that committee's about, to give you more information about that, also um. We have a a a leave situation in the assessing office, so Roberta's being temporarily appointed uh last week to um to whenever the maternity leave is over. In order to cover that office, so that would expand her hours over a part-time hour, but I did check with several HR professionals, and as long as it's an interim appointment, which this is. Uh she retains her part-time status and we don't um run into a situation with uh retirement benefits, et cetera. So we vetted that out, uh we thought Bobby was a good pick to cover that office, has already received some training, and we'll make sure that uh when Jenny comes back, the offices. There isn't just a pile of stuff that she can just continue to do her work. R R G's okay with it, and um the Board of Assessors was also notified as well.
Can we handle all of these with one motion, or do we need to do each one separately?
I think I think several, right, I mean, the appointments, yeah, the resignation, I don't know, Alice, um did did you wanna, I mean, you're here, did you wanna comment anything on on uh the.
I don't necess, I don't necessarily want it to.
I don't nec- I don't necessarily wanna talk.
Okay.
I just um. I just thought maybe you wanted people here. I am on the planning board. The planning board is serving as the Affordable Housing Committee.
Yeah. Yep.
But when that vote was made, I wasn't on the planning board.
Okay.
So it's mostly a matter of sort of joining that group.
Okay.
And um hardly anybody's on it from the original committee, so we do need to work on it with with Ryan and figure out where we go from here a little bit.
Okay. Sounds good. Thanks for joining it. Um but it feels like we probably have, we can do a bunch of these appointments, but not the resignation and or whatever else, right?
Right, that would be the exception, I would think.
And I would do Bobby as the exception probably as well, just 'cause of different circumstances as it's based on a temporary.
Okay, okay.
So just re- uh I move to uh accept the appointments. Want me to just read the names or?
Sure.
For the record, of um Sean Dame, alternate inspector of wires, Francois Steiger. Affordable Housing Committee, Donna McGrath, Economic Development Committee, Brianna Whitney, Historical Committee, Carol Whitney, Historical Committee, alternate. Alice Libdal of Affordable Housing Committee.
I'll second that.
Discussion? On favor?
Yes.
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 I also moved to accept the uh resignation of Caitlin, how do you pronounce her last name?
Theme, I believe.
Theme from the cultural um council resignation honor or resignation.
I'll second that.
Discussion? On favor?
Yes.
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 Also a move to accept the appointment of Roberta Tivo, Assessing Administrative Assistant, it's as an interim appointment.
Discussion? On favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, uh we are up to committee updates here. Uh the Q E M P task force um.
Thanks, Alice. I did I did warn her. She was okay with waiting.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay.
Didn't mind I think I was rude.
No. Alright, have a good night.
Yeah.
Good night.
Thank you, good night.
It was interesting meeting, very good meeting.
Okay. So the um Q E M P task force, uh there's no update there. Um Ryan, I don't know, have you heard anything further from where it stands um with, you know, any, I haven't gotten any emails relative to where things stand with the new Bering Tree closing school and all that stuff?
Just um just TA chatter at the MMA conference um about will they, won't they and and when the next thing is, but nothing official, nothing.
See, so that came up in the in the the meeting. I know I explained before, we'll just spend a second on this. They the 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 school was very clear that the process could just stop at any time. So it until it got to that final vote of the school committee, where they would then have three to six months to do it.
Yeah.
But it didn't have to, it could just stop. So I again, I haven't looked into it. I don't really know.
Didn't they have a certain period of time to go to the next stage though?
It the next, no, no, no. The next stage is just to be on the next or a a upcoming meeting for, I don't believe there was an actual timeframe for an upcoming school committee meeting for them to vote it.
Wasn't there a time frame? Okay.
And that would trigger the timeframe after that, so I don't know. I don't, I'm not gonna try to.
Because I would have to go to town meeting for them.
Right, within three to.
One of the reasons that would stop it is if the select board hadn't entered into an agreement.
Correct. Would would have entered.
The district.
That would allow wa- a similar sort of relationship like we have with TAPS.
TAPS, yeah.
Correct. Okay, thank you. Uh and the Town Center Committee, we canceled the meeting this month 'cause 'cause we're still waiting on um, you know, whatever. We've got a long process and we've been on a long process, so. Um we'll just, I guess the next piece of that's gonna be the uh the state getting back to us on on our revised design. Twenty-five percent design. Um uh matters, anything come up? Not reasonably anticipated by the chair, nothing from me. Anybody else?
Before I forget, wha- what's the status of the fire department, the um exhaust bid?
Um. So we're in a standstill right now and I just would rather not say publicly, but I will have an update for you. So we're we're discussing things with council right now that that are.
Okay. Sure.
Not certainly not something we're trying to hide, but will be available at our next meeting or an update. I should know tomorrow or the day after.
Okay.
Basically we have a disagreement about the the total cost of the project as it was bid, so we're reviewing um bid law.
Okay.
Gotcha.
And uh why are the fire department, the fire truck is what like half built or something?
So I think it's gonna be.
Well, I think. Almost ready.
I don't get to be the first ride, but I think it's gonna be soon, like a month or so. And also the tree warden did email me back um and he said that uh it's fine with him, so if the board's okay with it, we're just gonna have Rich cut the trees.
Sounds good.
Trim the trees.
Prove. Um any anything else anybody got? Public press?
Uh Ryan, did that flag get torn?
Yeah.
So we have a new one the same size?
Um. When the trees are fixed. I didn't wanna get a new one until the trees are fixed, so.
But the s- that same size is nice.
Make the motion to.
We should buy some of that cost.
Are we ready for that? To adjourn and move into executive session?
We are.
Okay. I move to adjourn just the open meeting and purpose of moving into executive session. Want do you want me to?
Yeah, go ahead.
Do I have to read it?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Executive ses- session under GLC thirty A. Twenty-one A three to discuss strategy with respect to litigation in the matter of Normington and all versus Galvin and all U S District Court number eighteen. CB dash one one six seven six dash N M G. If the chair declares.
I declare.
Hmm? Do I have to read that? If the chair declares that discussing the matter in opening meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the town, votes may be taken.
Not to return.
Mm.
Not to return.
Not to and with not not yeah attention of not returning to open session.
No intention.
I'll second that.
Okay. Jeff?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Pass.
Jimmy? Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
You can pull the mic.
Do we wanna try this off or do we wanna go?